In 1995, the property was given a zoning variance for the rear yard setback. The plans for that addition showed the eastern side yard setback as being fourteen feet off the property line. A little survey done before the current project shows that the addition actually ended up being built at thirteen foot one inch away from the property line, meaning the side yard setback on the western side needs to be ten feet eleven inches rather than ten feet. And then the applicant thought he had the ten feet to work with. Work has already begun on the project with the proof plan showing a cutout of the part of the garage area to conform to the ten foot eleven inch side yard requirements. When looking at the property, it's a bit unique in that the side yard in question, the thirteen inch, thirteen feet one inch is really on the rear of the house, so the side yard property line and dog legs behind the house. So we're looking at from the street, this setback right here is around twenty-seven That wasn't a result of the applicant that was done during the addition in 1995. Over the past five years, there have been eight zoning variance requests for side yard setbacks. Of the eight, seven were approved. They all pretty much had to do with extending garages and that sort of thing. The one that wasn't approved was for a property on Levitt Avenue where the applicant was wishing to tear down a house and build a duplex. The most recent one was for the lot split request at 2145 Durant Street where the commission approved a side yard variance for that split to be conforming. Is it any questions?
Just briefly, you weren't here in 1995, so we can ask difficult questions like how did, and neither was the current owner, so these, some of the interesting things about this situation happened before any of the people that are currently here today. But I found it interesting in the description that the addition that was built did not match the variance that was granted by the commission in 1995, and I just assumed, is that true? Like we, but someone granted X feet and...
The variance was actually for this part of the wing over here. So really, even though it wasn't built fourteen feet, the thirteen foot one inch would still be conforming.
It was a different spot.
Yeah, so it wasn't, yeah. It's still conforming when it was built, but yeah, it just wasn't built exactly how they said it.
Okay.
Other questions? So I would like you just to clarify it for me with your hand in the drawing. So where is it right now and where is it gonna be?
So the one-story house was at the edge, right here. So the clear white is where that was. And then the new addition is gonna be this black shaded area. So that I'd have to go up to ten feet in the property line, whereas the requirement would be ten feet eleven inches.
Okay, so that is...
Because this over here is thirteen feet one inch instead of fourteen feet.
That's actually helpful.
So, because there's only, what, it's the sum of the two side variance?
Yeah, both sides have to equal twenty-four feet.
So there's nine areas, yeah.
So that's where that comes in.
Correct.
Thank you. See? It was a good question. It's a good one.
Yeah.
All right. So had they, had it been built the way that they thought it was, this wouldn't have been an issue, but it wasn't, and so now it is.
Correct.
All right.
And there should be conceptual drawings, four plans, and some pictures in your pack as well.
Okay, yeah, lots of pictures. Now, but now I understand better what the issue was. Okay, does anybody else have any questions?
Just so I'm clear, was it that back when they did this project in 1995, that there was a zoning variance that was granted by the city, but it was something that was different than what was presented?
The zoning variance was for a rear yard setback, I don't wanna say sixteen feet, instead of twenty-five feet. And the site plan that this show that was submitted for the variance application showed sixteen feet right here and fourteen feet over here.
So the error was really in the site plan?
The variance request in 95 had nothing to do with this right here.
But was the error back then because of the site plan was incorrect? Is that what it was?
I don't know if it was, yeah, the wrong measurements on the site plan or wrong measurements by the builder, but...
So, let's see if I can do this, kids. So we thought that this was fourteen feet in here, right? So if that were so, if this was fourteen...
Then the ten foot would be allowed on the western side.
Then that would give us an additional eleven inches to play with, and then this would be in compliance. That's essential, we'll be set. So it's just that this is, okay. Got it. That's wrong, Brian. What did I do to get rid of all of it?
I just cleared it up.
Oh, clear, got it, thank you. Brian, it's just like you really have a brain.
They burn some companies.
He bent it too. Like everybody else could be answered too, but I'm just... Okay, I have no more questions. Does anybody else have any questions? All right, thank you. I'm gonna open a public hearing on this. We always give the applicant the first chance to speak, so if you'd like to come forward and speak to this.
Well, thanks for taking the time to review this. This was actually a shock to me because of what was on file with the city on the onset of this. Everything was in compliance, so when we were doing the designs and so forth, trying to keep it within the setbacks that were required, et cetera. And then kind of at the, one of the last meetings, we noticed there was a difference between what the city had on file and what we had. So again, I appreciate it for reviewing this. It was something that was a little bit out of my control to be able to do that. But again, I don't, I don't know that there's, there's much that I can do with the exception of shaving off that corner of the house to make it in compliance, so that's really all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks.
Would anyone else like to speak to this agenda item?
My, um...
Any address, please.
Thank you. My name is Deanna Eckert, and I'm at 2827 Reeds Lake Boulevard, about two blocks away from the property. And we did have a case in somewhat recent history about the next door neighbor wanting to have three garages, a three-car garage, about the same distance from the Reeds Lake block. And I'm very appreciative that the architect was able to change it and put them on the side, so that there wasn't, so it looked like it had a front of the house, and they changed the front door location too. It's unfortunate that due diligence perhaps may not have occurred in this because they could have flipped the floor plan, they could have flipped the garages. But once again, it is a case also of a three-car garage right on the Reeds Lake Trail, and we've been avoiding that. And if you don't put in a third car garage, if you leave it at, originally it was a storage room, it would be well within the parameters. That's one thing I'd wanted to point out, because it has very minimal frontage, and actually their front door and office were on the other side, they would have had to switch the driveway in order, and then the two driveways would have been close to each other, and two cars, two garages and all that sort of thing would have been close to each other. And there were other options that could have been done. At this point, I would just suggest that maybe skip back and have just a two-car garage, and then it would fall within what we have. And I know it sounds really tight, but two homes don't necessarily make it meet the twenty-four feet. It was created for a reason, and I don't know why they put it at that angle, except it followed, it followed the one sideline. It followed one property line originally, and that's how it kind of ended up the way it did. So it's a very interesting house, and I wish I'd been wrong with it, because the plan looks like a, like a really creative plan and well executed. I just object to having a two-car garage, and if it's a three-car garage, the third garage, the single garage, and if that wasn't there, it would fall within the zoning and the boundaries as it is. Thank you. Thank you for considering.
Would anyone else like to speak to this agenda item? If they say no, and I'll close the public hearing and bring it up here and ask for a motion.
Motion to approve the variance as presented.
Support. Comments?
I just, I guess briefly, to the speaker that's asking about the three-car garage, certainly sensitive to character and fit in the neighborhood, but I think in this particular case, were it not for, were it not for an error that is very clearly outside the realm of what the homeowner could have been responsible for or current staff, it's difficult for me to see how we would even have to have discussed this. If everything was the way that it was in file, they could have gone ahead without any sort of variance at all. So it'd be difficult not to approve this. I kind of hope for this.
Yeah, which I assume is what they did, is they adopted to not give a variance, and then discovered that... Any other comments?
Question, I don't know if this is for Mr. Mizikar, the, this was not a complete teardown, I don't know if it should have been for the applicant or not, this is not a complete teardown. There was some pieces of this left in place to, I mean, it was a pretty extensive renovation, but there was certainly pieces of foundation that were already in place, stayed in place as part of the renovation.
Right, two wings up, two back mini additions were completely left, and then most of the foundations left, so they did, but the new construction on top of these is equipped, right?
I know that's been a fact, that's kinda come up before. I'm trying to minimize how much digging into earth is happening around the areas as well, so I just appreciate that perspective. Thank you.
I would add, I would add one other thing that gives me comfort on this one is the unique nature of the shape of the property in terms of the, what by the naked eye from the street would appear to be the setbacks, the fact that you've got a twenty-seven foot setback along that kind of what would appear by most normal purposes to be the side yard. And in fact, if you, if you go back to the area where it narrows down to thirteen one along, I guess maybe as the east side, if I have my directions right, at least it's the right side of the drawing, if you actually went kind of straight across from there, you'd have more than ten feet of setback. You're kind of taking the narrowest two portions to get to the twenty-four, and so that gives me an additional comfort level, in addition to the circumstances, unique circumstances of how this even came about in the first place.
Thank you. And I also will add that although I appreciate the comments from the person in the audience at the neighbor, there is no limitation, there's no ban on three-car garages, so I just have to take a look at what was the plan, what was the intention of the plan. The intention was to have it be in compliance, and then while it was already well underway, discover that it was slightly out of compliance. All right, if there are no other comments, all those in favor of the motion, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes, or say no. It carries. So thank you very much, and I'm sorry you had to take a little sidestep from this. You tried to do the right thing. Appreciate it very much, though, and thank you, Alec, for catching that and getting this all set. All right, next item is to consider the request to approve a property line adjustment between 2950 Bunell and 2960 Bunell.
So we have a request from Mackinac LLC, who will be represented by Sears Architects tonight, for the properties at 2750 Bunell Avenue and 2760 Bunell Avenue. They wish to adjust the property, shared property line between the two properties four feet to the east. So on this survey, this darkened line would be where they're proposing with this small dotted line just four feet next to it where the, where the property currently is. Looking at the review of standards, if approved, both properties would still be conforming to these zoning requirements in terms of the lot sizes and all structures on the property. If approved, both the properties, we continue to have adequate easements to existing public utilities. I did provide a table showing a lot size comparisons amongst other properties in the vicinity. As we reference, the dark hash there would be all the properties within 500 feet, which is the standard to use for comparison. So the, in terms of size, we're in kind of the middle of the pack, not the largest, not the smallest. So if approved, they would not stick out. If approved, there would be no disturbance to floodplain areas, well, and drainage courses and terrain. The orientation of the yards and buildings on would still remain the same, and if approved, there would be no change in demands on public services, roads, and facilities. Really, the main reason for this request is that the property owners wish to construct a big addition on 2950, and so they wish to move the property line to fit that addition on.
Because otherwise, they would be coming here for a variance like we had tonight.
Since they're both the same property owner, they figure we're not just moving the property line.
Yeah, rather than change, yeah, okay. All right, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Mizikar?
Just a brief question, I appreciate you running down each of the requirements, and I believe you've outlined things quite well in that moment. Just minor detail, you know, we've had stuff with trying to prevent flat lots where real odd shapes, I mean, this seems a very minor move. Is there anything about the shape of this lot that would be anything that would conflict with anything?
No, I think we're keeping the same rectangular shape as most of the other properties on the streets. Obviously, they're not all perfect rectangles, as you can see some of the properties north of these two. But I don't think this proposed change would make them significantly different or obscure compared to other properties.
Anyone else? All right, thank you. I will open a public comment for this agenda item. We always give the applicant or the representative the first chance to speak. Is there anyone that wants to speak to this?
Good evening. My name is Rob Sears. I'm the architect with Sears Architects working on the project, and I think Alec laid it out pretty clearly, but what we'd like to do very simply is take the existing property line and move it four feet to the east. Pretty straightforward.
There you go. Why elaborate? Right, all right.
Keep it simple.
Okay. Thank you. All right, would anyone else like to speak to this agenda item?
Steve Williams, 1038 Rand Avenue. First, I don't object to the proposed lot line change, but more importantly, I don't believe I have a basis or even right to object, and it goes to the ordinance itself. In preparing for the hearing, I read the chapter fifty-four of the city's code, which mandates this hearing and sets the parameters for judging the acceptability of a planted lot line change. This chapter mainly says that lot line changes must leave affected lots in conformity with zoning, which Mr. Mizikar has addressed. So to the extent that the zoning ordinance is legally defensible, this is not worthy of a public hearing. However, chapter fifty-four goes further to say the lot line change must be harmonious with the character of the adjacent properties, quoting there. Harmony being subjective arbitrary and not subject to reason is what apparently is the purpose of the public hearing. Harmony is also not a right that any individual can hold free and clear, while the right to use one's property is such a right. I believe the ordinance is badly drafted in this regard and should be amended or removed before it costs the citizens a lot of money and defense costs. It is also an invitation to create conflict amongst neighbors over what is harmonious and a lever for the intolerant to obstruct the property rights of others. I urge the council to fix this before it results in needless expensive conflict. So in, in, in a nutshell, I don't object, but I, in reading the ordinance, I have a great deal of trouble with our dictating that one's property has to be in harmony in some way that we can't define. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, and we've addressed harmony in other areas, so I will, I appreciate that, and I will talk to our legal counsel later. Thank you. Any other comments about this agenda item from the audience? Okay, I'll close the public hearing, bring it up here and ask for a motion, please.
Motion to approve the move of the lot line as described in the agenda item, subject to the recommended conditions that Mr. Mizikar put in his memo.
Support. Comments?
I think the memo lays it out really well, I think the standards are clearly met here, so I think this is the need thing I want to support.
Anyone else? Both properties and structures will still be conforming to all the zoning regulations, so I would support it. All right, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes, or say no. Thank you. That passes. And next on the agenda, we will ask Alec Mizikar to present six, seven, eight, nine, and ten on the agenda. Then we will have one hearing about all of these agenda items, and then we will vote on them one by one.
All right, so this is second reading of our zoning amendments, zoning ordinance amendments to our commercial schedule of uses. We introduced them at the city commission meeting about a month ago. Nothing's changed with these, so they have the same amendments that you saw then. If you like, I can go reread through each one of them just to spur memory. The main section that we're looking at is section 5.36, which is the actual schedule of uses. This shows what uses are permitted by right or by special land use in the commercial district. By changing those, we end up having to change it for other sections just because there's associated regulations and definitions and whatnot. So starting with sections 5.7, 5.10, and 5.15, these are three new definitions that we'll be adding or propose to be adding. That's for bed and breakfast, hotel, and product showroom. Mayor and commissioners, you're welcome to ask any questions as we go.
All right, yeah, that's a, that's a good idea, thank you.
As is all information.
Yeah.
And I guess before we move into this, I just want to reiterate that the planning commission did spend four meetings looking at these amendments, so quite a lot of time to chisel these down to what they ultimately recommended to the city commission. Public notices were mailed out to property owners and businesses within the commercial district to make them aware. And the Gaslight Village Business Association was sent copies of these amendments through email, and we also attended a meeting as well. We have not received any negative or positive feedback from anyone in the community in that, in that regards. So moving into the zoning ordinance amendments, the first one would be for new definitions to bed and breakfast, hotel, and product showroom, which we currently do not have in our zoning ordinance. So no questions, I'll move on to the actual schedule of uses. Going down the chart on section 5.36, the first change would be to residential dwellings above the ground floor of a commercial building that's being moved from requiring special land use approval to being permitted by right. And then just below it, a new use of residential dwellings on the ground floor of a commercial building is being added as needing a special land use approval.
May I ask a question about that?
Of course.
Is that, I believe when we were talking about that during the master plan, that we said ground floor residential would be in the rear. Was that distinction made at all?
Yeah, that'll be when we get to section 5.74, that's called out in that section.
Okay.
So I will touch on that.
Okay.
Later.
Thank you.
Yep. And then moving down the table, moved, just doing some, some house cleaning, we moved Barber and Beauty Salon from its own row to moving it to other similar uses down below, personal service establishments, et cetera, et cetera. We added that in there just so they're all similar uses. And health clubs and fitness centers, we added, and private sports and recreational instructional facilities, just to add more variety. That was in a list of suggested uses during the master plan process. We consulted with, if you remember his name?
Howard Cullen.
Howard Cullen, yes, thank you. And he had a list of suggested uses that he thought would be appropriate for Gaslight Village, and so that was on his list. And we already had health clubs and fitness centers, so we thought that was similar, so we added that language just to, just to diversify that. And then moving just below that, we added hotels, including bed and breakfast, as requiring a special land use approval, as a new use as discussed in the master plan. And some more house cleaning, we took the other uses section and put that at the end of the table, as most times other sections are included at the end of the table, so it's easier to find. And then looking at offices, this was kind of the biggest change to the table. We are changing medical, dental offices and clinics of physicians, dentists, psychologists, chiropractors, optometrists, physical therapists, and similar or allied professions. And then we also added and non-boarding veterinarian, veterinarian services with no outside uses. So before that was requiring a special land use approval on the ground floor, and that's being changed to a permitted use by rights on the ground floor, and then continuing as a permitted use by right on the second or above ground floor. And then professional office uses such as insurance, real estate, legal sales, and similar allied professions are being changed from requiring a special land use approval on ground floor to a permitted use by rights. And then a new use was added of product showrooms and similar mixed office with product display uses. That use was added as permitted use by right on the ground floor and above ground floor. And then within other uses, the planning commission wished to change radio and television broadcasting stations as requiring a special land use approval would now be permitted use by rights. So if anyone has any questions on the table itself, we can move into the sections of the ordinance that are referred to in the table.
Mayor, I, I said Mr. LeBlanc is here, I appreciate you being here tonight. Are we gonna have a separate time to deal with this?
No, I was just, I was just saying to Doug, you may ask any questions at any time to Mr. LeBlanc. And this is, since we're talking about all of them, I think as we're approaching something that sounds appropriate, go ahead.
Yeah, I would love to hear, I assume that you spoke with planning commission at some point in their process about this as well, but the issue of the ground floor office space in terms of the medical and professional space, obviously the current ordinance had this idea, as I understand the rationale behind it, is that certain types of retail were believed or thought to maybe be more conducive to additional foot traffic or additional spinoff kind of traffic within Gaslight Village, and that professional officers or medical officers might not be as conducive to that. Can you speak to that at all in terms of, has the thinking around that changed within planning circles? Has our actual experience just not met that? Is there any more insight that you can give to the city commission about that, that issue?
Sure, thank you. Yes, I think the thinking has changed around that. Medical offices in particular generate a lot of foot traffic, so having them on a ground floor is not contrary to the concept of generating activity at ground level. Some offices don't. Real estate offices, insurance offices, typically those folks go to their clients. But I think part, and I, I wasn't involved in all the planning commission deliberation, but I think part of the rationale was that they still have employee activity, they're filling up space within the Gaslight Village area, and it, to prohibit them on the ground floor altogether probably was going beyond what was in the best interests of the city. So I, I think we've seen in other communities where there has been a change of attitude toward that as well, that it used to be that only retail and entertainment uses were coveted, invited, wanted at street level, and certainly they still are, but not necessarily to the exclusion of other uses that can also generate some beneficial activity.
One quick follow-up to that, does that, does part of that change in thinking tie at all to kind of the changing nature of retail more broadly in terms of the challenges to traditional bricks and mortar retail and just needing to have maybe a broader view of what falls within the scope of a commercial district? Because if you aren't gonna just rely on traditional retail, you might have a hard time even filling the available space.
Right, and I, as I said earlier, I think that was part of the thinking that rather than have vacant storefronts at street level, it might be better to have a use occupying that street front.
Thank you.
And I would add, I don't believe it's just only the thought of, this is the only way we can keep from having vacancies. I think that it's just, we realize now, and that's why we continue to go through a master plan every ten to twelve years, because things change. And we've seen, as Commissioner Walters pointed out, we've seen so much change in retail that working on the master plan and having these in-depth conversations and then putting the work in here is really as a result of all of that master plan work coming to fruition, looking at what makes sense today that probably didn't make the same sense ten years ago. So, yeah, so good question. So, yeah, so good question. Alright.
Moving on, next would be section 5.65. This is looking at the regulations on hours of operation in the commercial district. So the change here would be obviously allowing hotels and bed and breakfast to operate 24 hours a day.
Quick question, I mean, if there was someday a hotel and that hotel happened to have a restaurant in it, this wouldn't allow that restaurant to stay open until all hours.
Correct, it'd just be the operations of the hotel.
Just the operations of the actual hotel, not any dining facility that might be attached to it.
Correct.
Yeah, and probably a good idea at this time, since there was so much discussion, people kind of picked up the buzz about hotel last time we were talking about this. There is no hotel in the works, we certainly would be interested if there was one, and we would be talking about it more, but this just, as we work on the master plan, we are opening our minds to other ideas of what might be here, and there was a lot of discussion around hotels, B&amp;Bs, and the business district. And so this is just further work in conjunction with the master plan, exactly what we're supposed to do after we pass the master plan is to look, how can we change our ordinances to allow a lot of those discussions to happen around what was identified in the master plan? So, no one has brought us the idea for a hotel, but this is saying, we now are making sure that it would be a possibility if somebody wanted to bring it forward.
I see.
Yeah, thank you. And if someone were to do that, if someone were to propose putting a hotel in the community, and it is a special land use designation, we have the option through the planning process to decide on the scale, the size, the number of rooms, things like this, correct? Or we have a limitation on this? We'd be talking about many things if it was brought forward. It would just be brought forward, put in, and we'd have to look at, does it comply with our zoning, you know, exactly how big is it, how tall is it, does it fit? I mean, through the planning discussion, yeah, parking, yeah, all of that. But at this time though, we don't kind of sort of have a...
There's no rule proposed as how many rules there has to be, or how many a maximum number, correct? There's no regulation on that as of right now.
Okay, so it would just be sort of a wide open discussion if and when someone were to propose that?
I mean, we still have rules on placement of the building and height, so you're kind of constrained into that building.
Right, good point, okay. So that, as what happens with any sort of a project that's brought forward, they always start with city staff who go over what our zoning is, what the rules and regulations are, and work with them to help them create what they then can bring forward to the planning commission and the city. Thank you.
Moving forward onto section 5.72, this is called out in the table next to the professional office uses, so this is just providing more regulations on office uses. So this, most of the subsection A1 is just some housekeeping that's changing, because before the rules were, it was for a special land use approval, now it's a permitted use. So it's kind of changing the language around that. Taking out subsection four, because that referred to the special land use approval. Subsection B, taking out two, because that's now gonna be permitted use on the street level, so that's no longer relevant. And then adding subsection C as additional regulations for product showroom and similar mixed office with product display uses. Questions on those additions?
And I guess I would want to comment that I see a lot of these points, I see the thought process behind what the planning commission was talking about, still wanting to keep people flowing through the area, wanting to make sure that they allow walk-in traffic and those types of things. So I can see the thought process and really appreciate it.
Moving on then, section 5.74 is for residential uses. Most of B is crossed out as they now would be allowed to be on the street level, granted through special land use approval. The planning commission didn't want to put restrictions or regulations on parking for residential uses, so anything referring to that was taken out. Subsection C was added for residential dwellings on the ground floor in a commercial building. And going back to Commissioner Hamrick's point earlier, we are calling out here that dwelling units shall not occupy any space along the front of a commercial building except for the entry door and hallway leading towards the dwelling. So we are allowing the door to be on the front of the building, however, any living space cannot be on the front of the commercial building. And then the second regulation being the entire width of the building except for the entry door, an associated hallway of dwelling along any street frontage must be occupied by a non-residential use otherwise allowed in the C1 district. Subsection D was added for hotels and bed and breakfast establishments. It reads, "The parking plan must be submitted with the applicant's site plan during the special land use approval process. This parking plan shall include at the minimum at least one dedicated parking spot for seventy-five percent of the available rooms." Commissioner Ziegel asked me at the, two meetings ago, asked for a map showing the parking exemptions in the village, so... The hash grid area shows where the off-street parking article with the zoning ordinance shows those exemptions from parking requirements.
So, clarify, I'm sorry, a little bit more clarification, that you're saying in this new plan, this is what will be?
No, this is already existing.
That's what I thought, this is existing, okay. Alright, anyone else have any questions? Alright, now we're gonna go through the, if there's no more questions for Mr. Mizikar, I will open up the public hearing for this, and people can comment on all of the items that you discussed, and then we will go through and take these one by one for our votes.
Yeah, I actually did have one last comment, and as it relates to this parking exemption map, I hadn't just thought about this for now. So how would that interrelate, the areas that are exempt from parking in terms of our potential new ordinance language with regards to parking for a hotel or something like that? Like, I mean, if someone was calling for a hotel in the exemption area, would they still be subject to the parking requirements, or would they be exempt?
So the exempt article is only for permitted uses, so any uses of special land use approval would have their own parking requirements, so they wouldn't be exempt.
Alright, thank you. Alright, I'm gonna open up a hearing for all of these agenda items, so for all the things that Mr. Mizikar just discussed, if anyone has something to comment on any of these items, if you please come forward and give your name and address.
Seagrally, 435 Cambridge, I just have a question. You were talking about hotels, and we were talking about bed and breakfast. The question I have, is there a defined area for that, so it can't be outside of that? Are we talking all of these, because it wasn't clear to me when we said that.
No, this is in the business district.
In the business, okay, so that is defined and real.
Yes, yep, good question, but definitely the business district, thank you. Does anyone else want to speak? See no one? Close this, and bring it up here and ask for a motion, and we are going to go down the line, so I ask for a motion for number six on the agenda.
Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt, I just, I think I have a couple of general comments and just feedback.
Okay.
I realized we didn't get any formal written response from the Gaslight Village Business Association or any current business owners in the area. I just, you know, I'm gonna be thankful for the work that went into this, I think from everybody who's sitting up here, as well as the planning commission and the staff as well, but I think this is a direct follow-through from our master planning process, right? This is us continuing to go down and really try to be easy to do business with. I think we've had variants come up over these past, just over the past few months even, and, you know, I'll be supporting a lot of this, and full disclosure, I have a bias because I'm directly affected by these ordinances as well, running a business in Gaslight as well, but also in full disclosure, when we first put the restriction on, to say we didn't want to allow offices necessarily on the street level, I was also involved as president of the business association, saying, yeah, I think I should outlaw my own use for now. But obviously, things have evolved over time, so we're continuing to align with some of what's currently happening, as retail has evolved, showrooms have evolved, these new uses. Nothing's gonna be perfect, we both of course have the ability built in to adjust and change, to make, you know, continue to align, but I think the addition of the new uses in here is extremely important. I think the, doing our best to protect the village, protect the character of the village is extremely important as well. I think it's one of the, certainly huge assets, once again biased, but huge assets of our city overall is having this business district that's so easy to use for all of our residents and guests who come into our area as well. So, I just wanted to kind of take a couple minutes, I guess as far as the types of things that I've heard back from business owners as well.
Appreciate that.
You know, we've had a business owner who had to go through a variance process and pay a fee just to simply move their office, and this fixes that. We've had new things come up, or there's been a lot of questions, should they be allowed, should they not be allowed? This addresses that. So there's not really any questions, so we are consistently treating people the same, you know, new business owners coming to the area, and not having to wonder, gee, should it be, is it not, and kind of go back and forth there. So, the reality is, there's gonna be more uses as well. So I think the feedback is, yes, let's be easy to do business with, let's be cautious, let's put some double checks in place, because we don't know where retail's going even five years from now, or maybe even less. So, but the direct feedback, as I've had a chance to, since I'm in the village every day, to be able to talk to other business owners and other people there, that, yes, we appreciate it, there was no general consensus enough to be able to put an opinion out in writing from the business association, but at least I wanted to provide somewhat anecdotally at least, and once again, fully disclosing my biases towards everything as well.
Thank you.
So, thank you for allowing me a couple of comments.
No, no, thank you. And actually, Commissioner Miller, having said on the planning commission, do you have any comments to bring forward from that process?
Yeah, I do, I think, maybe to echo some of the comments from Commissioner Ziegel, it's very difficult to get a group of people to fully agree on any of these things, so as I was looking through the individual motions that we're gonna have to make here tonight, you know, proving definitions, that one should, boy, it's gonna be easy to get through seven to nothing. Some of the debate and the planning commission revolved originally around the difference between a permitted use by right, so a ground floor office, should that be permitted by right, or should it be a special use permit where we have to come and hear it? And I think the business that Commissioner Ziegel's talking about, I think that probably swayed the discussion in the planning commission toward, do we really want to make someone who has an office on the street level fifty yards away from where they're trying to move, do we need to make them pay a fee every time they want to move their office fifty yards around the corner to a new landlord? And I'm, I'm, re-reflecting what was one of several meetings where we talked about this, I think that was the discussion that helped sway this probably in the direction of permitted by right, and also the fact that this can be changed over time if it was something that had to be. We may have voted unanimously in the end, but there was a lot of debate and discussion, so it was certainly not something where people easily came to a consensus, but we spent a lot of time talking about this, this was not something that was pushed through in the meeting, we had public comment, we had the gentleman whose business got relocated came to talk to us. And we also reviewed a lot of the comments from Mr. Cohen, I think was the name shared, about the changing nature of retail districts in general, so I think there was some thought that this might insulate us against some of those changes if they became, if it became more, even more challenging to open a small retail business, this would at least give some opportunity for some ground floor business to fill those spaces if that came up, although we are aware that that has not been a challenge for us in the past. And I guess the only, the only other thing I would add is that I do think that our master plan itself, and I did not bring the verbiage, but it does call for a shift in our thought a little bit, so I think the planning commission unanimously agreed that this set of changes would line up well with what our master plan was suggesting, that this was in the, in the spirit of that master plan. I think there's lots of places you can find details and make discussions, but certainly at the broad level, I think that's what the planning commission felt, certainly than I felt when it came out of that meeting.
Good, thank you.
Thank you for looking at that.
Yeah, and Mr. LeBlanc, do you have anything to add? You don't have to, I'm just quick on the spot here. Thank you. Alright.
I actually appreciated the point that you made, Mr. LeBlanc, about the medical offices and the foot traffic piece. That was something that was a huge concern for me, especially when we had had the master plan meetings a couple of years ago, and we talked about, you know, whether it made sense to have offices on the ground floor, and I think at the time, I was very opposed to that whole concept, I thought, you know, we've already, we have enough of them now. I know that some of the retailers had expressed to me that they were deeply concerned about that because of potentially lacking the foot traffic factor and generating more business for them. But I, I think it's interesting, the point that you made though about that, earlier today, when I was looking at the schedule of uses, and I was thinking about the medical dental offices, and then also the other professional offices, you know, trying to draw the distinction between them as far as what, which type of office would actually generate more foot traffic. And then you just kind of pointed out that, you know, sometimes real estate and insurance doesn't always generate that as much foot traffic as the medical does. Something to keep in mind for sure, I think when we look at the whole entire business community, because we, you know, we already have some of these types of businesses now, but you kind of convinced me though that I can feel, I can feel good about voting for this because of the people that work for the medical offices, they themselves are generating that foot traffic utilizing the businesses, and because they're a part of the district themselves. So, thank you for pointing that out, so that kind of makes me feel a little bit better about, about the way this is done.
Thank you. It seems like every time I go to the doctor, or when I would take my kids to the doctor, I followed that up with a trip to the pharmacy and the grocery store to buy something, so, yeah, some more foot traffic. Okay, any other comments? Alright, then let's take these one at a time. May I please have a motion for agenda item number six, and put a little bit of detail in there, please?
Move to approve the changes of definitions in C1 commercial district as dictated in sections 5.7, 5.10, and 5.14 of chapter 50 of title V of the city code.
Second. Thank you very much, thanks, thank you. Any comments? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. May I have a motion for agenda item seven, please?
Motion to amend section 5.36 of chapter KD of title V of the city code pertaining to schedule of uses in the C1 commercial district.
Alright, there's a motion and support. Any comments?
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm a reluctant yes on the schedule of uses changes with regard specifically to the first floor professional and medical space, and I'll echo Commissioner Hamrick's comments, I think that, Mr. LeBlanc, your thoughts and insights on that were helpful to me in getting to a greater comfort level in that. I appreciate that we have the ability, that what we're doing here is not speak now or forever hold your peace, that there's going to be ongoing adjustments, that the retail environment is going to continue to change and evolve, we need to be able to change and evolve with that. But I also appreciate the efforts of our planning commission on this, and between their efforts and Mr. LeBlanc's comments, I've gotten to a level of being comfortable going along with this.
Good, thank you. Anyone else? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Most say no, thank you. Alright, may I please have a motion for agenda item number eight?
Motion to amend section 5.65, chapter 50, title V of the city code pertaining to hours of operation in the C1 commercial district.
Support. Alright, I have a motion, support, any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Most say no. It carries. May I please have a motion for agenda item number nine?
Motion to amend section 5.72 of chapter 50 of title V of the city code pertaining to office uses in the C1 commercial district.
Support. Comments? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Most say no. May I please have a motion for agenda item number 10?
Motion to amend section 5.74 of chapter 50 of title code V of the city code pertaining to residential uses in the C1 commercial district.
Support.
Alright, any comments? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Most say no. Okay, thank you, so we'll put that through. And once again, thank you to the planning commission for their work, thank you to city staff, and thank you, Mr. LeBlanc, and I think these are good changes. We'll work on the master plan, so, nice point, thank you. Alright, next items on the agenda are having to do with the fence ordinance, agenda item number 11 and 12, and I think we'll first have this introduced by Al Mizikar, and then I understand there might be some discussion around whether or not to go forward today, but Al, why don't you introduce this, please?
These amendments to the, to the fence ordinance, chapter 83, and then to the clear vision ordinance in chapter 32, section 3.38, were introduced at the city commission meeting two meetings ago, since the beginning of August. There's been no changes to those amendments, so they appear the same as they did two meetings ago. Just in background again, at the May 6 city commission meeting, the mayor's city commission requested that the infrastructure committee conduct a review of the fence ordinance and report back with their recommended amendments. This request followed... This request followed the approval of events for any requests for a six-foot wooden privacy fence to be one foot off of the city right-of-way in the street side yard of corner lots. The Infrastructure Committee met three times since then and has recommended the following amendments to the fence ordinance, and then to Section 3.38 of Chapter 32 in regards to clear vision. So I'll just go through each subsection one by one, just like the last time around, and if you guys have any questions?
So let me ask this before we even go through this, do I make any comments?
Well, I would, I'm interested in pulling this off the agenda for now, because there are still some more pieces that we needed to discuss, and it was my understanding that we were going to have another meeting to cover some bases, which hasn't scheduled to go.
Okay. I apologize, I wasn't under that assumption, but we can definitely schedule another meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I, I am happy to hear that, because there are many things that I am concerned with here, but at the last meeting, I didn't have the impression that that was what happened, so I'm happy to hear that it is. Can you tell me specifically, what are the items that you're going to be addressing?
Well, I spoke with a resident who had a concern about a shared fence, and when we have, in the permit process, if we could include notification of the other neighbors that would be sharing that fence before the project would actually commence, could alleviate some potential headaches, or confusion, or potential problems by a project that's already happening.
So just for fences that are right on the property line, or?
Fences that are right on the property line, or fences that are shared, not necessarily in the property line. I don't know, some of the rear yard fences, sometimes they are on the property line, sometimes they're inside the property line, but they're, they're shared. So the neighbors that are to the immediate fence, they would like to be notified, everyone that's sharing the fence, basically.
Okay.
So that's something we can talk about at your meetings, so, yeah, I just want to, we don't have to give the exact detail, but.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yeah.
In, just in general, my understanding of, what is it, eight point six, eight point six one M, is that the permitting, like, all of the details of the permitting process itself are pushed off to the schedule of fees? We don't talk that, does it go in the, in the ordinance, does it? And I guess that's a question for Alec, but I'm not sure. But that, when I was reading, while, while I was listening, I was reading M, and I was like, I don't think that even goes in the ordinance, I think that's just a press, a procedural thing, but I guess I'm not sure.
You're saying for the, for the notice itself?
Well, the notice of, what do we do on a shared fence, and how do we, how do we issue a permit for that differently than other things? Isn't that just part of the permitting process?
Part of the permitting process.
Which is not in here, that's, this is, the permitting process is punted in here, it says procedure for obtaining the permit will be set forth in a fee resolution. So we don't cover that in here, do we?
Yeah, I mean, I could refer to, to the Attorney Huff, I don't know if it'd be best to have it in the ordinance itself, or to have it spelled out in the fee structure. I don't, I don't know that makes a difference, but.
Well, I would agree with Commissioner Miller, I don't think it's currently in the ordinance, certainly. I think it is in the fee resolution, it extends to address it all. I don't think it is addressed at all, at least the sharing issue. But I, I think you're reading the ordinance correctly, it just kind of incorporates that provision in here and provides for the adoption of a resolution to deal with the issues relating to permit.
Okay.
There may be some other items that we needed to address, I just don't have that noted.
Yeah, it just seemed like I was hoping to maybe go over the minutes of the last meeting, the mayor and Commissioner Zagel seemed to have a lot of questions about the changes that were made, and I was actually hoping to go over the minutes and maybe in infrastructure, maybe address those concerns, see if maybe we can hone in better, so that people are feeling a little bit more comfortable.
Well, I can tell you what my questions are. One is, the height in the front yard was changing from three feet to four feet, and I don't know why. If there's a pool in the front yard, which would be highly unusual, then I could see why there'd be four feet, but then I would call that out. I don't know why we would be changing from three feet to four feet, so I'd want to have more information on that. And then we're changing the twenty by twenty to ten by ten, and I just wonder how ten by ten was arrived at. We gave the Skacks family, I think it was seven by five, clear vision view, which, four by five, or whatever it was, so, which isn't clear vision, so I'm wondering why it's ten by ten.
I believe that was to match the ten-foot setback for six-foot fences on the street side yard of a corner lot, because we were, in practicing the new ordinance, I'd run into situations where people would end up having to kind of zigzag their fence to meet that twenty-foot clear vision, and so changing that to the ten by ten would eliminate that problem.
So maybe if you just write down Alec's concerns and send them to the.
Yeah, I, I just want to say his last couple, just so it gets into the record, so that Karen has it. So one is, side and corner lots are ten feet off the street, or off the right-of-way, and if it's closer than ten feet, it should not exceed thirty-six inches and be set back still at least one foot. So that particular one probably is the one that concerns me the most, because we, nothing in here is called out if, if there's a pool, which we know has to be four feet, and sometimes it was being said that we thought it should be six feet. And if you're saying it should be six feet, where should the six feet be? If it's a pool, is the six feet allowed one foot off of the right-of-way? I think that that whole piece needs to be well thought out, because the variance that we gave before is way not even close to what is being proposed here, so I'd like to have some logic around what is coming up on this particular item, so.
But I don't think we're going to retrofit something to, that's a variance that's in the past. I don't think that that needs to be addressed in, I'm not sure, it seems like we're working backwards on that.
No, and I'm not, and I'm not saying, no, I agree with that. I'm not saying because of that. What I'm saying is there, there, this doesn't address what if there is a pool. If there is a pool and it's closer than ten feet, does it, do we still want it just to be four feet high? Or, because the discussion that we had at the time was, four feet high, people can see the pool, it's an attractive nuisance, where it needs to be six feet high. So I think we need to address that, four feet versus six feet. Is it different with a pool versus a trampoline versus a backyard with a barbecue? I don't know. But I think that we should be having that discussion and talk about four feet versus six feet, and not have it be capricious.
And Alec, is there any way we can find out how many homes in East Grand Rapids have corner lots with swimming pools, where this would come up? Is there any way we can find that out?
So I could count.
I did a little research on Access Kent, actually, during the time, and the only two that I saw in a relatively close area were the mayor's pool, and then the other pool that we had addressed in the previous variance. So I'm not sure exactly, I think that's a great question, I'm not sure how often.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm curious to know if it's, if it's worth really digging in, if it's not the kind of thing that would be, that we'd be having to address beyond what we've already addressed.
So like I say, it isn't just for a pool, I mean, I think that that would, that would be bad if we just said for a pool, but if, if there are other items that might be in the backyard, like I mentioned, a trampoline or a whatever, some sort of, so I just think that we need to have that discussion about.
Is there a fence ordinance for trampolines? I'm not sure.
No, but when, when we said, let's give him the six-foot fence, because people will walk by and they'll see his pool, it'll be an attractive nuisance, and they'll want to go in, it would be the same thing, kids might walk by and see a trampoline and might want to use it, or might walk by and, just, is there a reason to have a six-foot fence, ever, is what I'm, is what I'm asking? And I just would like to, I just haven't seen the logic of this. There was very little, very few changes made, and I was hoping to see more cohesiveness and more changes that would highlight the reason that we're doing this.
I think, you know, there's clearly the, the main goal here, right, is to not put any family or the staff through what happened previously, right? It was not fair to the Skacks, and it was very difficult for our staff to be able to understand exactly how they should approach a particular situation. I think there was language used by all those commissioners that, that they could be addressed a little bit better through some subcommittee work. Are we going to come up with the perfect thing that's not, never going to have a variance? Of course not. Are we going to have everything that maybe came up in that last variance that should be addressed? Of course not. But I think that there was some key issues that came up there, and I think that our goal for today should be, well, let's get some of the things that, there's a few people that don't see on that subcommittee, that maybe we get this out on the table and say, okay, great, I think you rightfully so asked for, you know, some specific things to say, well, what is it you want us working on? We could spend the next four years working on this thing, and still never had the perfect ordinance. So I think it's, there's a, you know, and I, you know, for example, one of the languages I heard is, do we grandfather, right? Do we let anything that's already in existence today simply be and simply be replaced? I think, I could argue that one either way. I don't know what the rest of the point is here. So I think that that's one of the things that certainly was, was hot on my mind, because, you know, once again, I could see why we have an offense ordinance at all, why not just let everybody put all their fences up? You know, I could argue that, too. So I think that that's kind of some of the, as we go back through, and I very much appreciate, Commissioner Malley, you're talking about maybe going to go back to the minutes of that meeting, too, just, I think it's just, you know, yeah, it's a, it's a great idea, and I think so specifically, I think the mayor brought up a couple of things, I think, you know, the grandfather would want to kind of step out of my mind, because that might be a really good argument, it might be something that should be included in here. And I just was looking to understand, because you guys are kind of our subject matter experts right now, so we're looking for, to kind of report back. We can't all work on every issue and go in depth, we'll never be able to keep our community safe, we'll never get a road spec, right? Like, we've got to stay focused on the hot topics and setting the right strategy here. So I think fundamentally, let's all keep in mind, we never want to put another family through that, we never want to put our staff through that, we want to make sure we've got a process the best that we possibly can do, and we don't want to revisit this again in another three months, so.
Well, what's really wonderful, though, now we have a permit in place, we have a permit process, and we didn't have that before.
I understand.
And that should help, it's not going to, it's not going to resolve every single, every single issue or incident.
Yep.
But at least it's there, we didn't have that before.
Yeah.
So going forward, we can meet on the process.
The variance was nothing to do with whether or not there was a permit process in place or not, and everything to do with what this commission felt was appropriate to grant in that particular instance, right? So is there a process in place to try to help make that easier? Of course, but there's still a process to go through, there's still somebody that could completely disagree with the commission, go through an almost year-long process to finally get what they feel is best, and get two different answers from the commission at two different times. So fundamentally, I think there's a lot of work to be done yet, and I appreciate the fact that the subcommittee is willing to do the work, and I think, I look forward to hearing at least those couple of things addressed. Anybody have an answer, come back two weeks from now, it's exactly what we have in front of us today, but I appreciate the fact you're willing to take some extra time to address it, just come up with, sharing your conversation on it, so we all understand, we're all in the same position.
Just to be clear, are we now discussing six-foot fences, period? Because you just had a concern about six-foot fences in general?
No. When I was told that you wanted to reconsider this, I was told that you had said that you knew that, that the mayor and Commissioner Zagel had brought up that there were some concerns. I was not going to be able to support, to vote for this. So I said, well, that makes me happy, I'm glad that you want to go back and take a look and, and see what can be adjusted. So maybe I was misinformed, I thought that that was the reason that you wanted to go back and take a look at each of these items. So I was just letting you know what my concerns were, and that's all. I had the feeling that this was going to pass whether I agreed with it or not, so I just was happy to hear that you wanted to go back and take a look at it. And I just was making a list of those things that I am uncomfortable with, and I don't know if there's anything else that Commissioner Miller or Commissioner Walters has that they're uncomfortable with.
No, I'm feeling like I missed a pretty important meeting last time I was on vacation. So, no, I don't have anything else to add, other than I do think it's better to go back and make sure that we get it right than it is to bring something forward, vote it through, and then have regrets later. So I, I'm, I think it's always better to know what the concerns are from anybody, and we bring them forth to this meeting, and we send it back to the subcommittee, and off we go. So I know Commissioner Zagel just brought up grandfathering existing fences in, I mean, if I had to pick one thing that is the most difficult to figure out, it's that one, because we've, more than once, with some of the folks that are here, talked about, I think it was several years ago, talked about Briarwood, where there was essentially just a line of fences on the street, none of which were compliant whatsoever. If we pass, if we bring in something that is, say, like-for-like, or grandfathering existing fences in uniformly, well, then we are essentially codifying that, that stretch of fences without any ability to review it. But if we don't do that, then we're doing it totally differently than we do most often with things like garages and additions and things like that, where, you know, if you're taking down half your garage, and you're like, I'm going to keep it on the same footprint, typically we vote that through. So there's, these are not easy discussions, and I think what, what all of you are hearing from all of us right now is how difficult it can be to come to consensus on something that has sometimes two valid opposing arguments. So I appreciate hearing what the concerns are, and look forward to working through them.
Yeah, I, I agree, I mean, this is, this is a good process, we shouldn't look at this as a negative, we should look at it as a positive. I mean, that's why we have multiple readings, you know, when we have an initial reading and we get significant questions raised by any member of the commission, whether it's the mayor or any one of the commissioners, I think it's perfectly appropriate for the working committee to go back and, and to take, take another look at it. I guess maybe I had thought or hoped that that might have happened in the last month, but obviously it sounds like it hasn't happened, so let's wait until that's happened and come back and deal with this, is what I think.
So maybe if you could meet in September, and then perhaps get this on the first agenda in October. Good, thank you for your willingness to do that. Now, so, since it has been, we've had the first reading, John, can we just let this sit? We don't have to do anything to it? Because there's no motion in process?
Well, you could, you could table it till the first meeting in October.
Okay.
Because it's on the agenda, we should have a motion to table it.
Yes.
Okay. Move to table Items Number Eleven and Twelve on the agenda to our first City Commission meeting in October.
Support. Any comments?
Just, is that, there's no comments, are there?
No.
That's right. I didn't want any comments. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Most say no. Now, John, I know that this is highly unusual, but since we know that we have a member in the audience that wanted to speak to this, is it, is it okay if I open up the comments from the audience?
I, I think you have discretion to do that.
So I will do so, however, I am going to say that these are comments, if there's something that you want to be considered as they're looking at this ordinance, as you've just heard, they're going to be looking at it over the next month. So if there's something you want them to consider, please state that, this isn't a question-and-answer period, this is if you have concerns, you can bring them. So I'm going to open up a public comment and allow people to come forward.
Elizabeth Godey, 417 Cambridge. Thank you so much for, I mean, I was, I think, around with the Planning Commission when the fence ordinance first went through, so it's interesting to see it come back again in the transition that it's gone through. One item that I was hoping that could be considered during this next month of review is a provision for natural disaster, so for portions of fences that, or an entire piece of a fence that needs to be taken down due to weather. We certainly have seen a lot of harsh winds, and I think it would be nice to make sure that that is under consideration. The other thing is that there is no special provision that really is taken into consideration for any double frontage lots, and certainly Briarwood's an easy one for me to point out, because I live on a double frontage lot, but there's other streets, too, Holden Pyle, and, you know, there's several other streets that are also double frontage, and I think that we are in a unique situation, even when it comes to the landscaping item that comes into play. I mean, you have to imagine the fact that we have no privacy, for us in particular, because we don't have anything to grandfather in, we have no fence, we have no landscaping right now that is that close to the road that would be affected, but you have to imagine that I am completely open from both sides of my house, and I think it would be really nice if you could take into consideration what that would feel like for you if you didn't have a backyard. I mean, we in essence have two front yards, so Mayor Seawold, when you were bringing up I mean, we in essence have two front yards, so Mayor Seawold, when you were bringing up the idea of a pool in your front yard, I guess in a way, we would be considered having a pool in our front yard, because we have two front yards. So those were, I guess, my, my items that I would love for you to consider over the next month.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I get clarification? I'm 99% sure I understand what you mean.
Sure.
You mean the term double frontage lots?
Yes.
But just to make sure I'm 100% sure, can you explain what you're talking about?
Sure, so I have, my driveway is off of what would be considered the back of someone's house, and then I have a street in the front of my house, so I'm literally in between, oh, we're getting a diagram.
Oh, gosh, I love to use these things. So, so this is Cambridge, and this is, what's the street?
Briarwood.
Briarwood. And the houses are, you know, so you've got a house here, and you've got their driveway back here, and so.
Yeah.
Front yard, so they, they are on both streets. So there's no house between them.
Right, and, and I think, actually, thank you so much for bringing this up, because this was another point I was thinking about, is, when you think about most houses that, even if their garage is in the back, you know, they have a driveway that comes off of the front of their house, which also gives you sort of like that, I don't know what it's called, but it's like that bank of grass between the sidewalk and the street. And so when you think about that 10-foot allotment, most people, that's sort of like, I guess unless you had something really huge on that portion of your street, you, you sort of already get that 10-foot. For us, I mean, our driveway, there is, Briarwood is a really unique situation, because the, the city has taken as much as they can on the Cambridge side of Briarwood, if there is a better way to describe that, they've taken as much as they can from our property, so there's, we're basically right at the lot line of, of Eastman has been, all the Eastmans been taken, so, does that clarify?
Yeah, that's okay.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this?
I also want to address one thing, and that is, we're on a one-way street, so it doesn't look like we have two double lanes on both sides, so that makes, and there is parking on the street, and as was just stated, you know, the Eastman is, so what we have is a situation where if you put a setback of 10 feet on a, on a fence, let's just say, on the side, for, because it's a one-way, it only has to be on one side of that driveway, that's going to be a long way into the backyard to put a fence up. So the question I have, and could you look into this, and that is, if you have vegetation, okay, bushes or whatever, we have a situation where the bushes are trimmed high enough that a car backing out can see up the street.
Can see or cannot see.
Can, C-A-N, can see up the street, okay? But the other problem to address, and Mark, I'll bring you into this, is because Briarwood is a one-way street with parking and driveways on the, on the opposite side of the street for us, okay? 25 miles an hour is way too fast going down Briarwood, because, I mean, even with the fences that are up, et cetera, you cannot see far enough ahead for 25 to be down that street, so that's something else to think about when you're looking at that part.
Thank you.
I appreciate you taking another look at this first, and I think my question revolves around the way these two articles are put together here, the fence and then the clear vision ordinance. And in the fencing ordinance, there is the allowance for, you know, pre-existing conditions, right? And it says that specifically, fence, you know, or, this is 8.61, page 2 of the fence ordinance, that, paraphrase it, if, that does, if a pre-existing fence does not conform to the requirements of the above sections, it may be continued so as long as it remains otherwise lawful, subject to the following provisions, which are listed below, which basically is allowing us to, you know, keep a fence that may not be in conformance with this new regulation, the way I understand it, and, and as long as you're applying the clear, but the clear vision part must be applied to any new type of construction, okay, that you would be putting in. So why, why isn't that same type of, basically, that's a grandfather clause, is what it is, you know, being applied to its associated and referenced section for the clear vision, okay? If you have shrubs, and, and this would be something that what you could maybe do, it would be nice if you could do, is take a, take a survey around, around East Grand Rapids there. I think there's more than one home that has shrubs that come right up to their driveways, okay? I don't know how many, but there's quite a few moving shrubs, and trees don't need to be moved, they just need to be trimmed up, the way I understand it, okay? So that's fine, but so they don't have to put shrubs, there's a lot of big shrubs around too. But if you're applying, you know, basically a grandfathering out clause for the fencing until it's changed, and it references the clear vision in here from, you know, the fence ordinance to the 3.38 chapter, why, why is it, the way I read the clear vision, you have to apply the new, say, 10 by 10 triangular clear vision area to these shrubs, when the fences would not necessarily apply? Okay? So it seems like they should go hand in hand, or am I misinterpreting the way that is written?
We're just having comments tonight, we're not doing question and answers.
So anyway, so that's the comment, is if you could consider that, you know, if there's pre-existing conditions for the shrubs that are not in compliance currently within the 10, the 10 area, just like you have for the fences, you know, those that are existing, then that would be appreciated, I think, for a number of people in the community, because it doesn't come expensively to move, you know, shrubberies, and some of these are quite precarious, so, something else to consider if you would.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Okay, seeing no one? All right, all set, then I will close this public comment. And next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. May I please have a motion for the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Support. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Those opposed, say no. And those comments, they will take those into consideration as they're, as they are talking, so. All right, our next meeting is on September the 17th, 16th, 16th, all right? Thank you very much, we're adjourned.